Excellent job.
Good thing you're not being reminded by that. I mean, yeah. Good job.
Uh-oh, you're the pastor, aren't you?
Couldn't agree more. Great, should have been changed to better.
I didn't read that one.
By the call of meeting to order, I invite you to stand for the invocation led by Councilman Lee Vogler. Remain standing for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
Let's bow our heads. Lord, we come to you tonight asking for peace and unity and understanding in a time which there seems to be so much animosity and division in our world, we look to you. And as it says in John, Chapter seventeen, "Holy Father, protect them by the power of your name, the name you gave me, so that they may be one, as we are one." Let us continue to pray for each other, love one another, and each of us do our part to make the world a better place. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Buckner.
Here.
Reverend Campbell.
Mayor Gilstrap.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jones.
Here.
Dr. Miller. Mr. Saunders.
Here.
Mr. Shanks.
Here.
Mr. Vogler.
Here.
Mr. Whittle.
Here.
I'd like to present a proclamation for Fashion Day, and I would ask, please come forward, Brian Hood and Kelly Cunningham, the present to receive the proclamation, and any guests that you may have with you. Whereas, Danville Fashion Day proudly presents a night of fashion, arts, entertainment, and creativity for our great city of Danville in the state of Virginia. And whereas, with the support of Danville Fashion Day's directors, Kelly Cunningham and Brian Hood, as well as many local and out-of-state designers, models, and vendors, Danville Fashion Day is committed to proving our city as worthy and capable of recognition in the competitive fashion industry in the surrounding areas. And whereas, through building local excitement and drawing tourists to the area, Danville Fashion Day aims to continue to boost the local economy within the community by hosting as well as supporting events to benefit local charities. This year's event will benefit our Boys and Girls Club. And whereas, Danville Fashion Day plans to continue to be a famously anticipated tradition in which to showcase designers, artists, models, retailers, and vendors in the community and to generate ongoing interest for future events. Now therefore, I, John B. Gilstrap, Mayor of the City of Danville, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the second Saturday of November as Danville Fashion Day in the city of Danville, and urge my fellow citizens to recognize and participate in its observance, given under my hand this ninth day of November, 2017, John Gilstrap. Brian. Thank you. And I'd also like to call Robin Jones, President of the River District Association, and the board members of the River District Association, if they are present, to the podium. Wait on the old guy to get up here. Oh, I'm sorry. Our distinguished Past Mayor, John Hamlin. Whereas, the city of Danville, Virginia celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently twenty-three million small businesses in the United States, which represents more than ninety-nine percent of American employer firms, create more than two-thirds of the net new jobs, and generate forty-six percent of private gross domestic product. And whereas, small businesses employ over fifty-five percent of the working population in the United States. And whereas, eighty-nine percent of consumers in the United States agree that small businesses contribute positively to the local community by supplying jobs and generating tax revenue. And whereas, eighty-seven percent of consumers in the United States agree that small businesses are critical to the overall economic health of the United States. And whereas, ninety-three percent of consumers in the United States agree that it is important for people to support the small businesses that they value in their community. And whereas, the city of Danville supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. And whereas, the River District Association and other advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday Act of Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, John B. Gilstrap, Mayor of the City of Danville, Virginia, do hereby proclaim November the twenty-fifth, 2017, as Small Business Saturday. And I urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year, given under my hand this ninth day of November, 2017, John Gilstrap, Mayor. Who to receive? Now, under special recognitions, we'd like to get an update from Danville, Pennsylvania Community Services Board. I introduce to you Dr. Frank Wickers.
Thank you. Mayor Gilstrap, members of council, Mr. Larkin, and staff, I would take great, I'm taking great pleasure tonight in presenting you our annual report for the fiscal year 2017. This year, our annual report is a clean and simple message to the community, focusing on who we are, who we serve, and what we do. The information in our report, which I think each of you have a copy in front of you, the information in the report outlines the ways that DPCS serves the citizens of the city of Danville and Pennsylvania County as the preferred provider of top-quality behavioral health, developmental disability, and prevention services. The unique cover of this year's report presents a small collection of the who at DPCS, some of the individuals that receive services, and the staff that serves them. Who we are. DPCS is a workforce nearly three hundred strong, composed of men and women who are passionate and dedicated in their work to help others live, work, and play in their communities at their maximum potential. Each one of the staff brings their unique passion, their skill sets, and their focus, that makes an impact each day on the lives of those that we are honored to serve. DPCS also has a volunteer board of directors, composed of fifteen citizens from, fifteen citizens dedicated to the community, seven board members from the city council, and the remaining eight appointed by the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors. Who we serve. The staff at DPCS works with infants, toddlers, children, adolescents, and seniors, everyone in our community. In the fiscal year 2017, DPCS directly served seventeen thousand, three hundred and sixteen residents of the city of Danville and Pennsylvania County through one hundred eighty-seven thousand, one hundred ninety-five distinct units of service. What do we do? There are nearly one hundred unique programs for adults and childrens operated by DPCS through its Behavioral Health, Developmental, and Prevention Services divisions. Some of these programs are small, focused, and provide a very specific service, such as Inside Out Dad, working with forty-four incarcerated men to connect them with their families and help them become more responsible and committed to their children while in jail and once they return to the community. Other DPCS programs, such as Case Management, found in all of our divisions, served three thousand, two hundred and thirteen individuals last fiscal year. The variety and complexity of our services meet the needs of individuals with behavioral health disorders, a developmental disability, or those who may be at risk. Tonight, I would like to point out just a few of the incredible numbers and programs that the DPCS staff facilitated in 2017. In our Prevention Division, we served eleven thousand, three hundred and eleven individuals in the schools and community, including programs like Red Ribbon Week, a national drug prevention campaign, and mental health first aid training for any resident of the community to enable them to recognize and respond to a mental health crisis, just like first aid and CPR for a medical crisis. In our Developmental and Behavioral Health Service Divisions, we served three hundred and five individuals with a home and community-based waiver, so that they could thrive in the community and not simply reside in an institution. We provided six thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven medication management appointments for adults and children. And finally, demonstrating the scope of one of our core services provided to most individuals served at DPCS, some thirty thousand, fifteen units of case management were provided to three thousand, two hundred and thirteen individuals. These are just a few examples of a nearly one hundred unique programs for adults and childrens provided by DPCS through its Behavioral Health, Developmental, and Prevention Services. In closing this brief synopsis, synopsis, on behalf of our Board of Directors, I would like to take this opportunity to thank you for appointing seven members from the city of Danville to the self, to the Danville, Pennsylvania Community Services Board of Directors. It's an honor and a pleasure to serve the community in this capacity, and we appreciate your confidence and ongoing support. If you have any questions about anything I've said or anything that you're reading in the report in front of you, Mr. Jim Bebo, our executive director, is here with me tonight to assist in answering any questions you might have. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Councilman Vogler.
Mayor, I don't have a question, but I do just want to make a statement and say that, to thank you, first of all, for coming and presenting the report, and thank you for what you do. The work that DPCS does is so important, and for you to take the opportunity to share some of that tonight is fantastic. You know, as you know, I had an opportunity earlier this year to kind of see up close the great work that you guys are doing, and it's truly phenomenal, and I want to thank you again for that. And on a side note, I think I mentioned it the last time he was here, but I'll embarrass him one more time. Frank is my next-door neighbor. I knew he was coming tonight, so I made sure I mowed the lawn this weekend, so he wouldn't give me a hard time tonight about it. But anyway, thank you guys for being here.
I mowed a strip that I think is yours, but it's on.
Best neighbor you could have.
Dr. Miller.
I don't have a question. I just really appreciate what you do. I always appreciate what you do. I had no idea you did this much. This is a very good synopsis.
Well-kept secret.
Well-kept secret. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Update. Communications from visitors. Citizens who desire to speak on matters not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Citizens who desire to speak on agenda items will be heard when the agenda item is considered. Anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come forward.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, my name is Gus Steyer, and I'm a resident of the city of Danville. I'm here before you tonight on behalf of the Danville Historical Society, I'm a board member there, to talk about the historic tax credits. We're very distressed to learn that in the current House tax reform bill, that the historic tax credits are scheduled to be eliminated. Historic tax credits are a thirty-year program. They were started in the Reagan administration. They were very bipartisan, received, you know, wide bipartisan support. In the last thirty years, more than forty-two thousand structures have been saved. And the craziest thing about trying to eliminate it is that for every dollar that's been spent on the tax credits, it's generated federal revenue of a dollar and eighteen cents. So it's actually a money-making proposition. I don't think I have to explain to any of you all how important the historic tax credits have been to the city of Danville, and not just in the River District, but the effort to revitalize the entire regional economy. So on behalf of the Danville Historical Society and other historic organizations in the Commonwealth of Virginia, we would request that city council pass a resolution with strong support for the historic tax credits to continue and to forward that resolution to our representatives in Washington, DC, our congressman, Mr. Garrett, our senators, Mr. Kane and Mr. Warner. This is coming up very rapidly. I don't even know if you have time before the next council meeting to do something like that. Have you got something already? If you're doing something, then I'll be glad to take a seat. So that's very glad to hear that, and so let's hope that it gets some attention. Thank you very much.
Hang around. You'll be pleased. Anyone else wish to speak on an item? Now, we asked him to speak on an item not on the agenda, and he did not know that it's not on the agenda, but it's going to be shortly. Anyone who wants to speak to an item not on the agenda, please do so. Please come forward.
Good evening. I'm James Cousins. I own Abe Copland Clothing down here on North Union Street. I would like to say, first of all, thank you, and I would like to say that because I believe you all have been doing a tremendous job with what's been going on in the city. Some of the programs and things that have been going on have really been helpful to the city, and it's brought a buzz to our city that's much needed. So thank you all for your hard work and your vision. I do want to say happy holidays that's coming up, so I wanted to say happy holidays to you all. We're going to be open on North Union Street. I would like for you all to come shop with us on Small Business Saturday or Black Friday. Take advantage of the great deals we'll have. And because of the holidays, I was thinking about Christmas last year, and on North Union Street, on the two-hundred block anyway, there weren't any Christmas decorations until the week before Christmas. And so I wanted to just kind of make council aware of that. I've spoken to the River District Association as well. You know, we're going to be singing. It's beginning to look a lot like Christmas, and we'd like for it to look like way at two-hundred block of North Union Street. So if you all would just keep that in mind, and if you can put me in the direction of who I would need to speak to, to make sure that we have the proper Christmas decorations, so that everything is looking just as good throughout the entire River District, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Larkin, will you look into that, please? Anyone else wish to speak on an item not on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on. I believe there is an item that staff has requested be added to tonight's agenda pertaining to federal historic tax credits. Do I have a motion to add this item to agenda under new business item F? Councilman Vogler.
Yes, Mayor, I would like to make a motion to add to the agenda a resolution to urge the President of the United States and the United States Congress to continue the federal historic tax credit program.
Seked by Vice Mayor Jones. Any discussion on the motion? This is a, I don't believe we need a roll call. It's just a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item F is added to the agenda. A, consideration of approval of minutes from the regular council held on October the fifth. What is your pleasure? Councilman Buckner.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion approving the minutes from the regular meeting held October fifth, 2017.
Is there a second? Second. Second to Dr. Miller. Any discussion? Call and roll, please. Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Consideration of appointments to the Industrial Development Authority. Vice Mayor Jones.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution reappointing C.G. Hairston to the Industrial Development Authority, a resolution reappointing Landon Wyatt to the Industrial Development Authority.
Is there a second to the motion? Seked, Councilman Saunders. Any discussion? Please call and roll.
Mayor Gilstrap.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Dr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Under new business A, consideration of rezoning HRC Highway Retail Commercial to IM Industrial Manufacturing, a portion, a portion of partial ID 50968, 57335, 57360, rezoned from IM Industrial Manufacturing to HRC Highway Retail Commercial, a portion of partial ID 70042, and rezoned from Old Town Residential to Industrial Manufacturing, a portion of partial ID 70251 and 70252. What is the pleasure?
Public hearing?
Public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Open the public hearing. If I'd have known, and I would have.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, my name is George Davis. I'm president of Davis Storage and Warehouse. This involves the property behind Mary's Diner, always known as Motley's Warehouse. We purchased the property about four years ago, and in discussing, trying to see the feasibility of putting a sprinkler system inside this building, it was built for tobacco, and of course, they didn't worry about sprinkler systems. We contacted the Danville Fire Department, and they informed us that in lieu of what we were planning on doing, that we needed twenty feet on either side of the building to be able to get fire trucks all around the building in case a fire happened on the property. And so in doing some research, we found out that on one side of the building, we only had fifteen feet. So we had made a deal with Mr. Farlow, who owns Mary's Diner, and there is some property that we own that is adjacent to his parking lot, and he's going to release some property to us along the left-hand side of the building, so that we can be, according to the fire department, do exactly what needs to be done. Mr. Shanks and associates were kind enough to do the surveying for us, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions, Mr. Davis? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on?
Mr. Shanks and associates were kind enough to do the surveying for us and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions, Mr. Davis? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on the public hearing? Close the public hearing. Councilman Vogler?
Yes, Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance rezoning from HRC Highway Retail Commercial to IM Industrial Manufacturing, a portion of parcel IDs 50968-57335 and 57360, otherwise known as grid 1808 Block 011, parcel 000034, grid 1808 Block 011, parcel 000035, and grid 1808 Block 011, parcel 000033, respectively of the city of Danville, Virginia, zoning district map, and to rezone from IM Industrial Manufacturing to HRC Highway Retail Commercial, a portion of parcel ID 0, excuse me, parcel ID 70042, otherwise known as grid 1808 Block 011, parcel 00032, of the city of Danville, Virginia, zoning district map, and to rezone from OTR, Old Town Residential, to IM Industrial Manufacturing, a portion of parcel IDs 70251 and 70252, otherwise known as grid 1807 Block 001, parcel 000005, and grid 1807 Block 001, parcel 000001, respectively of the city of Danville, Virginia, zoning district map.
Is there a second?
I think you missed a zero.
I think he left out.
Seconded by Councilman Whittle. And I have one comment. Surely there's a better way of numbering these things. But...
I might need another bottle of water after this.
Any discussion on the motion? Call and roll, please.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Doctor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Mayor, I have a statement of conflict of interest. I need to present for the record. Alfredo Shanks do hereby state that I have a conflict of interest regarding the consideration of rezoning portions of parcel IDs 50968-57335-57360 from Highway Retail Commercial to Industrial Manufacturing and other parcels to be rezoned as indicated in the motion. Therefore pursuant to state and local government Conflict of Interest Act, Virginia Code Section 2.23112, I must abstain from voting on this matter.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell? Mayor Gilstrap?
Aye. Consideration of authorizing issuance of bonds of the city of Danville in a maximum principal amount of $16 million. Open the public hearing. Anyone wish to comment? Close the public hearing. Pleasure of council. Councilman Miller?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to propose an ordinance authorizing the issuance of bonds of the city of Danville, Virginia in a maximum principal amount of $16 million to finance the acquisition, construction, and equipping of various capital projects. First reading.
Second, Vice Mayor Jones. First reading. Item C, consideration of using $1 million in VDH Drinking Water State revolving loan funds for a water capital improvement project. Counsel, Councilman Shanks?
Mayor, I move for adoption of a resolution approving use in the Virginia Department of Health Drinking Water State revolving fund loan program for FY 2018, $1 million water capital improvement project.
Is there a second to the motion? Councilman Whittle? Any discussion? Call and roll, please.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Doctor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Resolution number three. Councilman Miller?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to propose a resolution, the city of Danville, Virginia requesting the Virginia Department of Transportation to establish an urban system highway project for the Airport Drive Trail from Danville Regional Airport to US 58.
Is there a second to the motion? Councilman Vogler? Discussion? Call and roll, please.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell? Mayor Gilstrap?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Doctor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell? Mayor Gilstrap?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Doctor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Resolution number two. Councilman Shanks?
Mayor, I move for adoption of a resolution of the City Council of the city of Danville, Virginia requesting that the Virginia Department of Transportation to establish an urban system highway project for the improvement of North Union Street from Spring Street to Memorial Drive.
Is there a second? Councilman Buckner? Any discussion? Call and roll, please.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Mayor Gilstrap? Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Doctor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
And resolution number three. Councilman Miller?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to propose a resolution, the city of Danville, Virginia requesting the Virginia Department of Transportation to establish an urban system highway project for the improvement of Airport Drive from the Danville Regional Airport Terminal towards Stinson Drive.
Is there a second to the motion? Councilman Buckner, any discussion? Call and roll, please.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell? Mayor Gilstrap?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Doctor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Item E, consideration of requesting the General Assembly amend Virginia Code Section 62.1-44.1527, council letter number CL 1784. What's your pleasure? Councilman Jones?
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution requesting that the General Assembly amend Virginia Code Section 62.1-44, 15-27, entitled Establishment of Virginia Stormwater Management Programs.
Is there a second to the motion? Councilman Shanks? Any discussion? Call and roll, please.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell? Mayor Gilstrap?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Doctor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell? Mayor Gilstrap?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Doctor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell? Mayor Gilstrap?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Doctor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Item E, consideration of requesting the General Assembly amend Virginia Code Section 62.1-44.1527, council letter number CL 1784. What's your pleasure? Councilman Jones?
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution requesting that the General Assembly amend Virginia Code Section 62.1-44, 15-27, entitled Establishment of Virginia Stormwater Management Programs.
Is there a second to the motion? Councilman Shanks? Any discussion? Call and roll, please.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell? Mayor Gilstrap?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Doctor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell? Mayor Gilstrap?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Doctor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
And the item added F, resolution on historic tax credits. Lee, excuse me, Councilman Vogler?
Yes, Mayor, I move that the City Council adopt a resolution to urge the President of the United States and the United States Congress to continue the federal historic tax credit program and to otherwise provide with respect thereto.
Councilman Saunders? Discussion on this motion? Councilman Vogler?
Yeah, I'm glad that we had this put on the agenda tonight. You know, generally speaking, I support tax reform. I think it's something that's needed in this country and I think there are some good things in this bill that I believe will help spur economic growth. But eliminating the historic tax credit is not one of them. And I don't think it needs to be explained to anybody in this room, the significance that it's had for the city of Danville, but not just us, but for localities across the country and the role that it plays in rebuilding cities that have decaying and aging structures that would otherwise be lost. And look no further than our River District as a shining example of success, but many other examples you could give. I am encouraged by the letter, I believe, that was sent out to all the council, but there's a letter from, that's signed by numerous congressmen, including our congressman, that is expressing their support for the retention of the federal historic tax credit. But we need to continue to reach out to our elected officials, both congress and our two senators as well, because the senate will obviously have a role in this when the time comes. And make sure that they know the importance of the historic tax credit to Danville and localities like us all across the country. Thank you.
Councilman Shanks?
Yeah, I want to agree with Lee, Councilman Vogler, on this issue, but I wanted to go a little bit further because we, we need to acknowledge we have a debt problem in this country. And we do. And it looks, it may look like we're cherry picking things that the city of Danville wants to save, just like everybody else is going to be cherry picking. But I believe if everything in this resolution is correct and the information provided by Mr. Dyer prior to this meeting, or earlier in this meeting, if all this information is correct, it clearly indicates that this is not a cost, it's a net gain to the economy of the United States. And that's important, that is what is very important, is it's a positive cash flow for the United States and that is why I'm supporting this. I don't want it to look like the city of Danville is cherry picking things to support and not support and trying to become physically responsible, but this one matter clearly, as indicated in this motion, is a positive cash flow for the city, for the, well, definitely for the city of Danville, but for the country. So I'm supporting this. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Saunders?
I'd like, Mr. Mayor, I also support the resolution. It means a lot to Danville as well as those cities across the country. I think it's well-written, I want to commend the staff on that, for Danville getting $93 million and with more to come, that shows the program does work and we have a lot of benefit in our city for that. It'll be a mistake, in my view, for this to go away. And it also showed that, matter of fact, the country is also making money on this as well. With regard to our BLIT program, without this, we're going to have more of it. So we need this passed. I want to commend the staff again on putting this together. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Buckner?
Yeah, I don't want to sound repetitive to anybody, but as a member of City Council, I'd like to relay my support for keeping the federal historic tax credit program in place. Our River District has been a shining example of how our tax credit program for the state and federal levels have made a significant impact on the communities, great and small. Submitted a little thing to Mr. Crane here earlier tonight and hopefully that'll be an honor to the editor going in tomorrow as well with my stance on it. I really think that if we, if this goes away, we're in serious trouble, for sure. We've done a lot with this historic tax credits and I'm hoping we'll be able to keep it. Thank you, sir.
Councilman Miller?
Yeah, I want to chime in and agree, you know, without the historic tax credit and the new market tax credits, any of the buildings, including the old Danville Research Building, would not have been developed. And so we've used it very fruitfully here in Danville, but as we go around the state and talk to other cities, they're using it too. So we're not cherry picking, we're just going in with the other cities and states that have used these historic tax credits. So I can't imagine, you know, it says 2.4 million jobs, 42,000 buildings, average $131.8 billion in private investment. I can't imagine we can make that up any other way. So these programs are all going to suffer. So this is something we have to keep in the program along with the new market tax credits.
Any other discussion? I'd just like to make the comment, I too support this and this resolution is important for us to submit to our representatives, but just, or even more important is for you to contact them. Citizens of Danville, this is important to Danville and our future. Contact your representatives and let them know the importance of the historic tax. Call and roll, please.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Doctor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell? Mayor Gilstrap?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Doctor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Philip Hayes, thank you so much, and the River District team for the River District Festival. I was there, it was fantastic. A lot of people said, "Why, you kept on going," and we appreciate it. I see Dr. Francis here with the leadership team. Avery's Homecoming was a sell-out. Thank you all so much, there was all kinds of positive things going on that week, thank you for that. Last week, Councilman Buckner went down to the food trucks, it was literally hundreds and hundreds of people. You and I had a good time watching Quanet eat that big turkey.
Turkey leg, Todd.
And to Brian and Kelly and your entire team, even this week, it's been something every week. Just want to say, a lot of times, we don't take our time to talk about the positive things that are going on and has been going on in our community, and if you, like the clerk just stated, if you don't have anything to do, George Washington High School is going to be playing tomorrow night, the game starts at 7:00.
7:00.
At George Washington Stadium, and then on Saturday, take that royal blue, wear the same thing, nobody, no, wear it to the fashion show. Thank you so much for all that you all are doing for our community, it means a lot. Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Dr. Miller.
I just want to support the Eagles this weekend, avenge their only defeat of the year, and they're going to avenge their only defeat of the year, by the way. Also, Avery has a chance to have a winning season this weekend if they can defeat Greensboro College, so that game's in Greensboro. If you have nothing to do, you want to go down and support Avery. I want to recognize Tara Martin, Executive Director of Head Start, she's here tonight. They hosted the, on the 31st Halloween, they hosted the Fall Festival out at the Head Start Center, and a strange-looking rabbit showed up there to entertain the kids, I won't tell you who that was. But it was really a lot of fun entertaining the kids and watching all the events they had for them, so we appreciate what you do at Head Start. The Avery Airshow was this last weekend, they hosted the National Intercollegiate Flying Association Tournament, Regional Tournament, made people aware of the facilities, brought out people, there's interest of Avery hosting the national tournament in a few years. They said they just had to come up with a banquet hall that could seat 750 people, so that gives you an idea how many people show up, so I guess we'll work on that. I think we can probably do that. And Happy Veterans Day this week, all veterans. Thank you.
Mr. Saunders.
I'd like to thank all those who were involved in organizing the Veterans Parade last Sunday. I thought it was a very, very good, good event, and I want to thank everyone who come, who came out to support our veterans in our city and in our region, so thank you very much for that. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Shanks.
Yes, I didn't, I didn't look over on his notes, but I too want to thank the veteran groups that worked to put this parade together this past Sunday, and also the veterans who attended, and all those who attended, in honor of the veterans. You know, this Friday is officially Veterans Day, and I hope everybody will take a few minutes to acknowledge and, and show your support for the many veterans in our community who have served to support and protect our freedoms and our ways of life across the world and within our country. So, even though the parade has come and gone, let's remember Veterans Day is truly Friday, and let's show our support. I know I certainly would go out of my way to do so. And the last item I have is, I think today, and maybe earlier this week, there was some mention of the Fraternal Order of Police doing their annual event with regard to taking kids out to go shopping for Christmas gifts for local kids. And I just would like to say, there's, they're doing a campaign now, the No Shave November, which I'm supporting, and any donation is welcome, they said so in the article in the paper today, and I certainly look forward to helping that group in their efforts. I think Danville, this is an opportunity where we really can come together and support our police department and our public safety employees, so I hope this event for this year will be extremely successful, and please, a lot of our law enforcement folks, but more importantly, the children that they are in constant contact with in their job. Thank you.
Mr. Vogler.
Yeah, Fred made a lot of good points. The Veterans Day Parade, as always, was fantastic, but as Councilman Shanks mentioned, of course, the actual day coming up, and just always, if you know anybody who is serving or has served, you know, you can't thank them enough, don't just thank them on Veterans Day, thank them any chance you get. Goes, goes without saying the tremendous sacrifice that they do. The River District Festival was a lot of fun, it was great. There was actually, I believe, a handful of City Council members that we made our performing debut at the Carrington Pavilion singing backup for, for Smoking Guns. It was Dr. Miller and Vice Mayor Jones and Councilman Whittle and myself, and I asked Madison before we went on, I said, "Madison, are you nervous?" And he said, "It's just like Milli Vanilli, baby." So, no, we had a good time, it was a lot of fun, and I want to thank the Fashion Day group who was, who was here tonight, and in honor of you guys being here, Vice Mayor Jones and myself, we tried to do our best to look fashionable tonight, I hope we did okay, and, but thank you guys seriously for what you have done, continue to do.
Mine came from Abe Cockman's clothing.
My next one's coming from there, I'm coming, Small Business. And so, and also, as mentioned, the Food Truck Rodeo, Councilman Buckner involved with helping make that happen, a tremendous success, and I believe I saw the numbers, over 3,000 people came over the course of six hours, tremendous. You bring that number of people down in the River District, that is a huge success, and looking forward to the next one, and the next one, and the next one, so thank you, and let's look forward to the ones ahead. Brew Fest is this Saturday, I don't think I've heard Brew Fest mentioned yet, so I'll throw that out there. I know that Councilman Buckner, maybe some other council members are there volunteering, helping out. They're going to have all kinds of beer from all over the place, they got every kind of beer, I think they may even have Billy Beer there, you remember that, from the Carter? They may even be bringing that back, I'm not sure, but it's going to be a good time, and encourage folks to come out. That has become just a growing success year after year, another event that brings a ton of people to our city, and specifically to the downtown. The Kiwanis Pancake Breakfast is December 9th. Kiwanis, I'm sure most of you know, does a lot of great work in the community. This pancake breakfast is a large fundraiser for Kiwanis, that money goes back into the community. December 9th, if anybody's interested in getting the tickets for that, they can come talk to me or any other Kiwanian, and we'll help you out with that. Lastly, the GW game tomorrow night, I've been to, to every game I think this year, but one, and I bring my son with me, it's what he looks forward to all week long. He wakes up and he tells me what day it is, and then he tells me how many days it'll be until Friday, when the Eagles play again. He could tell you the score of every game, so we will be there tomorrow night, we will be rocking the blue, we'll be ready to go, and we're going to get that W. Go Eagles. Thank you.
Mr. Whittle.
Sure. I just want to thank everybody that shows up and participates in this city government process, and we also have the Danville Concert Association, Sunday, the 19th, 7:00, GW, and it's the Buddy Holly Store. Thank you.
Mr. Buckner.
Yeah, I wanted to touch on everything everybody else has already said tonight, but thanks to everybody that came out to the Food Truck Rodeo, it was a great time, all my colleagues here on City Council, I saw all of you there, it was good seeing y'all, thank you for coming out and supporting it. Thank you, Ken, for coming out and volunteering that morning, we really, really enjoyed your help. Like to see if we could maybe get some notifications sent out to residents and businesses along the parade routes, maybe a day or two ahead of time, so they can have a little advance warning to be able to get in and out. It was a great time, great turnout, I think it may have caught a few of the residents and business owners off-guard a little bit, and, you know, if there's any way we could do that, that'd be great. Also, tickets are still available for the Brightleaf Brew Fest, the 10th anniversary Brightleaf Brew Fest, that is, 10 years this year. I was asked earlier this year to join the board, so I'm a board member of the Brightleaf Brew Fest, and it's a, it's a great, great time, as you can imagine. It'll be held at the Community Market this Saturday from 3:00 PM to 8:30 PM. Tickets are $30 in advance, and you can purchase them online at www.brightleefbrewfest.com. There'll be over 100 different beers for you to sample, along with great music throughout the evening and afternoon. A portion of every ticket sold will go to support the Veterans Memorial at Dan Daniels Park, and Rides for Vets. It's a great organization that provides transportation for vets to VA appointments, if they need to go to store, the grocery store, something like, just, just a great organization all the way around, so please come out, raise your glass, support, drink a lot of beer, have a lot of fun, so remember this Saturday from 3:30 to 8:30 at the Community Market.
Reverend Campbell.
Veterans everywhere, thank you for your service. Meeting adjourned.